Without question?
Okay, I got this question. This is another audience question and I actually had somebody ask this before the forum as well. So it seems like it's something a lot of people are thinking about. So what is your position on the public works expansion in the East Phillips neighborhood? And forgive me if I want to make sure that I'm getting this right. This is the municipal water yard? Is this the same one? I'm all on the same page with this? Near 28th and Hayawatha? So where do you fall on that issue? I believe at this point the city has moved forward with it, but our current council member was originally opposed to it being there. So you all get sort of the benefit of the fact that it's already happening, but I'm just wondering, did you oppose it at any point? Do you think that it's a good thing for the community? And what would you want to see moving forward with this public works project in East Phillips? And I'll start down at the end, Mr. Peterson.
Boy, I wish I knew more about it. I'm one of these green people. Everyone needs clean water, but I don't even know what this project's all about, to be honest. Totally in the dark.
All right. Well, we'll come down this way and maybe you'll find an answer by the time we get through our other two candidates. So, Mr. Farah?
Actually, I need to get back on that issue as well.
Okay, so. And we'll try, Mr. Schiff, just for a third swing.
Sure. I think there's an incredible opportunity with so many city jobs in Phillips that is so close to our neighborhoods, and yet the city doesn't employ enough people who grow up in Phillips. And we have an opportunity to create pathways for careers in the field of public works. The men and women who deliver the clean drinking water that we all use deserve quality offices and workspace. I think it's moving forward. And if it does, I think what we need to do is recognize the opportunity of making this a gateway to the trades. A way for children who grow up in Phillips to see people who are working blue collar, living wage, government jobs with full healthcare benefits just less than a mile from their house. What an incredible opportunity to show people the careers that are possible. And so I think we should link with job training programs and very similar to the opportunity center that council member Abdi Warsameh has opened in Cedar Riverside. I think if this project moves forward, we should have a strong job training component that sees city jobs as one of the best ways that we can break the cycle of poverty in Phillips.
Okay, we'll move on. And we actually have a whole batch of issues that we could touch on, but this is a very good entry point, another audience question, which was, how will you represent the concerns of Lake Street businesses? As we started talking at the very beginning about the diversity of the businesses that are on Lake Street and the unique concerns toward nine, but this is a larger city issue with a lot of what the city council has done over the last term. So I'll start in the middle. Mr. Farah, how would you represent the concerns of Lake Street businesses?
So over the past 12 months or so, I've had a lot of discussions with a lot of business owners and there seems to be, you know, there's a gap between the business owners and our current city council member. And because of that, there's a lack of support for them when it comes to the licensing department, when it comes to resources. And so one of the things that I'm going to do as soon as I'm elected is again, how do we enhance our current local businesses within Ward Nine? But also, how do we bring in more businesses to Ward Nine? There are a lot of different potential locations within Ward Nine that are utilized or underutilized that where we're able, there are a lot of businesses that are interested coming into Ward Nine. We need to create a platform of discussion for potential resources. Not only that, we need to listen to our current business owners and look at the process, for example, the licensing. We need to, I believe that we need to revamp that whole system because it's just hectic for a small business to initiate within Ward Nine, if you're looking to that. And so one of the things again I'm going to do is, how do we revamp the process of getting any license from within the city of Minneapolis? And also making sure that, you know, that we are enhancing the micro loans within the city? And how do we bring more resources to the business owners of Ward Nine?
As a follow-up to that, everybody wants to bring more businesses into their, probably most people do, want to bring more businesses into their ward and their neighborhood. How do you do it? What are the levers that you have as a city council person to try and make some of that happen?
Well, right now, as a matter of fact, this is a fact. I haven't seen any businesses that the city council member Kano has brought to Ward Nine. I have seen a lot of evidences, actually, where she tried to stop getting a business into Ward Nine. I'll give you an example. A block away from here, there was a gentleman that tried to purchase Verde Blaser Building. And as soon as he tried to purchase that building, the first person that obviously you want to go to is a city council member from that area. And she was the only person that actually tried to stop that individual purchasing that building. He had a lot of ideas, bringing more businesses into that building. And he ended up actually having other city council members fighting for him in order to get that building purchased. And so at the end of the day, he did purchase that building without Kano.
And so you're saying if you were council member, you would have?
I would have created a platform where we are bringing more businesses to the ward in any industry, from the health industry to the IT industry. There are a lot of potential ways of resources for our ward. But right now, what's missing is that platform. 30,000 residents in Ward Nine. These are customers for potential folks. We're not having that discussion right now.
Mr. Schiff, I'll come back this way. How would you work with, represent businesses along Lake Street as council member?
Sure. I would be present at Lake Street Council meetings and engage with small business owners on the agenda of a safe, multimodal Lake Street that works for everybody. I would address public safety concerns head-on. I would address the resurgence of street prostitution that has come to the area in the last couple of years. And, you know, sometimes the most effective thing that government can do is get out of the way. Our city's regulatory code was last comprehensively rewritten in 1962. And as my friend Mohammed has said, there are so many overlapping jurisdictions within city departments. You literally could go to one employee in the Health Department, another employee in Economic Development, another department in the Tax Division, and on and on and on. And you end up with seven different answers. We need to make sure that we organize city workers around the goal of helping businesses, helping them attract employees, helping them stay open, and not be afraid to get rid of outdated regulations. Like when I authored the code to get rid of the law that says you can't make beer in Minneapolis anymore. That was on the books since prohibition. Took it off the books with a three-worded change to code, and today we have over 22 micro breweries open in Minneapolis.
There's more regulatory pieces to pick up on, but I want to give Mr. Peterson a chance. Representing businesses on Lake Street, how would you approach that?
Well, you know, I certainly would talk to them and discuss anything that the city may be perhaps hurting them, making it harder for them. Yeah, we talked about regulations, we talked about rules. A lot of businesses, they need to run their own business and keep the government out of it. Of course, there's regulations for safety issues, of course.
Are there specific regulations, Mr. Peterson, that you think that the city should do away with that you've seen right now?
Gosh, good question. No, I can't answer that right now, I don't know.
Okay, well, let me.
No, go ahead.
Okay, well, let me come. So maybe we could even do this sort of as a lightning round. The city did pass just recently a plan to move towards $15 minimum wage in the next two years. Do all three of you support that? Support that move for a $15 minimum wage? Yes?
Yes, I do.
Yes?
No.
No? So if you were a city council person, would you be trying to reverse that?
If it can be. It's failing in Seattle. The average person out there that works for minimum wage, their salary is down 1,500, 2,000 annually. It's failing. You're going to lose restaurant service, you're going to lose restaurant workers. You're going to end up walking up to a table and ordering your own, bringing your own plate to your table.
So since both?
I've spoken to a lot of chain restaurant managers. Their quote was they would leave.
So, Mr. Schiff, you said yes, you're in favor of it. Do you want to respond to some of those criticisms then of a $15 minimum wage?
Well, I think we need more nuance in the law. And I think, when I think of Mercado Central or I think of Global Market, I think of micro entrepreneurs. Micro entrepreneurs have five or fewer employees, most likely to be family members. I absolutely want to exempt micro entrepreneurs from the $15 minimum wage law in order to help entrepreneurs in our city and to help the small family businesses survive. We give loans to hundreds of businesses up and down Lake Street. I certainly hope the city has already started to renegotiate the terms of those loans since there's going to be new demands on wages in the next couple of years. And if it hasn't started already, I'll start that work in January.
One other big one that's actually on the agenda coming forward is a potential fair scheduling rule that the city is looking at. And just as a tiny bit of background, there's different ways that a fair scheduling piece could happen. But the premise, as it's usually debated, is that there would be rules that the city of Minneapolis would put in place that say that a business like a restaurant has to give people a certain amount of notice when they're scheduled. So the business manager can't just call them and say, "I need you here tomorrow morning at 6:00 a.m." And that you wouldn't be able to do things like schedule someone to close the business at midnight and then open it again the next morning at 6:00 a.m. I'm wondering how you all think about the idea generally of the city getting into the business of trying to create an ordinance around fair scheduling? If it's something that you could support, you do support. Absolutely don't support somewhere in the middle. I'll start with you, Mr. Farah.
Yeah, one of the things that I really don't like to see at the city hall is just because Seattle, Washington, or Denver city council members decided to do one thing, you know, all of a sudden, we're going to do it in Minneapolis. One of the things that, you know, I don't like to make decisions that quick. Just because it's good for one area doesn't mean it's good for another area. One of the things that I'm interested is when we're making such ordinances or any law, we need to bring the right stakeholders to the table. We need to bring employers, we need to bring business owners, we need to bring as many residents, as many people as possible to help make that decision. A city council member cannot make every decision. So my decision would be based on the decision of those stakeholders. While I want to protect employees, but I also want to protect businesses as well. So the question is, how do we come together to make a better decision on both ends? And so that is the way that I would really solve some of these issues. Is really having this discussion from both ends while protecting everyone.
So is the answer there, you're open to fair scheduling? You just, you want to talk about it more?
I am open to it, but I also want to hear the concerns from every side.
And so you want to hear the concerns? Is there anything then you're looking for that would help you make up your mind one way or the other? I'm just trying to, if folks are here thinking about, they're trying to choose between you all, what is it that they can point to you that you're the candidate who would?
I am in favor, as a matter of fact, but at the same time, I want to hear the concerns. Just because I like it doesn't mean that a lot of people are going to like it. That may change depending on, otherwise, you know, I'll be like the current city council member and make any decisions without them.
All right, we'll move down to Mr. Peterson, fair scheduling rule?
No. Let the city council stay out of any business they're trying to run. They hire people, here's your schedule, here's what you're required to do. Why does the city council even get involved with it? It's ridiculous.
All right, and Mr. Schiff?
I think when you are hired in a job, you have a few expectations, like the number of hours you'll be working each week, the number of hours off that you get in between shifts. I think that's very reasonable to protect workers, particularly workers with young children and families. We can see the effect of what happens when there's not enough family time in the home. And I want to protect the relationship and the time that parents have with their kids. But at the same time, we all know, if it starts raining, you don't expect the rooftop patio to be open. So I'm not going to be in favor of a law that's going to say, "Two weeks from now, you're guaranteed a shift to work the patio rooftop." And then it starts raining and the restaurant owner has no customers and too many staff. So I want to support the rights of protecting workers without mandating that you have to staff a sidewalk patio on a rainy day.
Great, let's move on. This is a very long question, so I might just try and get to the actual question part of it toward the end. But generally, it starts, my block club along 35W quarter has been plagued by panhandlers. And there's a variety of ways the panhandlers have been causing problems, they write about. "I don't want a stranger approaching my car window after dark. Although panhandling is legal, many municipalities have passed ordinances banning it at intersections and after dark. Would you introduce and support such legislation in Minneapolis?" I'll start with Mr. Peterson down on the end.
Boy, I think the police have enough to do without worrying about panhandlers. I really do. I mean, what's the number ratio for police per how many people there are in the city? And then they got to focus on panhandlers? No. Yeah, it's a nuisance, it's a blight, it doesn't look good in the city, of course. But enforcing laws, there's a lot of laws that policemen don't enforce. And I can't see, I can't see the ban.
All right, we'll come straight down the line. Mohammed?
Yeah, same here as well.
Same? Not in favor of introducing or supporting a ban on panhandlers at particular times?
Yes.
Gary Schiff?
We have a law on the books to address that issue. It's unenforceable because panhandling has generally been defended by the courts as a right of free speech. The law that is currently on the books was authored by council member Ralph Remington. And it gave enhanced penalties and prohibited panhandling near intersections and near crosswalks. And it is unenforceable. So I think we have to get to the root of the issue. And I've seen the homeless camps along 35W. They're filled with heroin needles. I've seen the growing homeless camps throughout South Minneapolis and along the Midtown Greenway. We have to address homelessness in our community by expanding shelter options. That's number one. Number two, we have to approach our heroin epidemic as a public health crisis. And we have to create same-day work opportunities as well. One of the crucial ways to get someone out of homelessness is to be able to say, "If you want to come right now, we have a job for you." City Minneapolis, the Park Board hires hundreds of seasonal workers. We could do the same thing here in Minneapolis and allow people a way to restore their self-worth, to feel that they have an opportunity to contribute and to say, "If you want to come right now, we can put you to work shoveling, we can put you to work in a park, and at lunchtime, you'll meet with a social worker who can help you with finding stable housing." That's what other cities are doing, Minneapolis needs to do this too.
We have a mayoral candidate, Jacob Bry, who as part of his campaign is talking about eliminating homelessness in the city of Minneapolis. I'm wondering if you think that that is a realistic goal and how you would work towards that if you do as a city council person? Is eliminating homelessness in Minneapolis something that's doable within, you know, a term or two of a city council? And I'll start back with you, Mr. Schiff.
Absolutely. When Hennepin County did a count in 2015, Hennepin County sends people out under the bridges to the hospital rooms along the river, and they do a count every quarter of how many homeless people there were. In 2015, there were 215 people living without shelter in our community. The last time they did a count, it was at over 400. In the next month, Hennepin County closed 120-bed shelter. Hennepin County has already announced that they intend to open less shelter spaces this winter than last winter. And today, we see on the front pages of the paper, city council fighting over federal dollars that are available for necessary homeless shelters and fighting over how to allocate these dollars. I think it's time to sit down again with the county and right away, open up 400 new spaces for people to be able to find shelter in our community. And they can't all be downtown. What I want to do is put together a coalition of council members who will agree to support a 50-bed homeless shelter in their district so that we can be part of the solution. City of Washington, D.C. has created hundreds of new homeless shelters, and they've spaced them out all at once throughout the city, right next door to condominiums, right next door to major employers. And it works. This is, I think, one of the most important things we need to do to protect what it means to be a loving and a caring community. In many areas of this country, people defend the right to camp outdoors. But in our community, these are people who don't wish to be camping. And winter is coming, and it shouldn't be a death sentence when you don't have shelter.
Points for a Game of Thrones reference, but where? Is there somewhere in Ward Nine you think about for a potential homeless shelter if we're going to build new ones across the city?
I have no particular real estate picked out in the back of my head. That's where the neighborhoods get together and start helping with providing opportunities and ideas. So I'll work with others. But I absolutely will work with other neighborhoods and other neighborhood leaders to say, "Ward Nine will do its share."
Same question, I'll go down the line. Ending homelessness in Minneapolis, a reasonable goal for the city to focus on? And if so, to what end would you feel is your responsibility to make that happen? Or what would you do perhaps?
Yes, so in my world, nothing is impossible. I think that is definitely a possibility. It'll take some time, but I think there is a possibility to make that happen, to meet that goal. And I think a city council member is a part of the solution. I think we need to make sure that not only the mayor, the city council members, we need to get the county involved, we need to get the state involved, we need to get federal officials and agencies involved, and also nonprofits as well. You have to create a coalition outside of the city hall to tackle this issue, but I think it's definitely a possibility, and I think it's worth tackling, definitely.
Definitely worth tackling. All right, and rounding out the order, Mr. Peterson?
Boy, what the numbers Gary just spoke about, that just floors me. I mean, here's a city of Minneapolis, a lot of money floating around, and why should we have throwaway people? We got to care for these people. Mary Jo Copeland down there, she does a heck of a job. I mean, she's a saint, she should be applauded every day and night for the work she's done. Yeah, this homeless, there's a lot of amount of health involved with these people, a lot. And yeah, they got to be cared for. We just can't have throwaway people. That's just wrong.
Okay, I got another question, which hopefully will start us into the realm of talking a little more about housing, which we've talked about now in terms of, a little bit in terms of affordable housing and homelessness. But this is a question very specifically about rental housing. And somebody told me the ward is 70% renters. Is that approximately correct? Somebody's nodding, I'll take that as an affirmative. Yeah, so there has been a focus on rental housing inspections. Will you change the city department to assure inspection of 100% of rental units? End of question. I will, I'll start with Mr. Farah, if you want to.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think 70% is enough. I think there's a lot of renters, there are a lot of renters within Ward Nine.
That was, I'm sorry, I was unclear. 70% is the number of, the percentage of people in Ward Nine who are renters? That wasn't, I actually don't know what the current inspection rate is right now.
Which is a huge population in Ward Nine. And so that's why definitely I would consider making that happen to 100%.
Okay. Does anybody disagree with that? Would everybody support this idea of 100% rental inspections? I'm seeing a nod.
Well, I think what has become of issue in the last couple of years is, and I got to call them out, the Steve Friend's apartment buildings that are in the Corcoran neighborhood and scattered throughout South Minneapolis. They have been rewarded the highest quality rating by the city of Minneapolis. They have been labeled Tier One housing, which means they are inspected the least and the least often. In that when an inspector goes into the building, the landlord shows them which unit should be inspected and doesn't give access to the rest. Now, I can't speak exactly as to why city hall thinks that Steve Friend's buildings are the best. Everything I hear and from what I've seen when I'm in those buildings, they are the worst. They are the absolute worst. So I think the worst buildings that have the most violations should be inspected the most. But the vast majority of landlords in the city of Minneapolis provide high-quality housing that is naturally occurring and affordable. And we don't need to micromanage going through every single one of their units every year. But if we put the resources where they're needed on the worst players and we don't give them, the worst player's a pat on the back and a medal, then we can focus our city limited inspections priorities where they need to be. And I think we should put an absolute priority on getting rid of the slum lines.
So that sounds like a slight shift as opposed to just 100% across the board. It's less maybe for folks who have a good track record?
Absolutely.
More on folks who have been past offenders?
Correct.
There's been other questions we've gotten about, before this, about increasing the amount of housing in Ward Nine. I'm wondering what you all, I'm interested in all of your thoughts on whether Ward Nine needs more housing? If so, where? And what you feel about the idea of this wonderful term that everyone has come to learn and love this election cycle, upzoning throughout Ward Nine? So you are nodding, Mr. Farah, so I'll start with you just because you are nodding. So you're saying Ward Nine needs more housing? Where? And what would you do sort of as a city council person to help increase the housing in Ward Nine?
Yeah, one of the things that we need in Ward Nine is more affordable housing. And what's lacking right now is that partnership between bringing more developers to Ward Nine in order to build more affordable housing. I mean, we haven't built more affordable housing since I can remember. And that's because we've, this is one of the issues that we have been neglecting at the city hall. And so one of the things that I'm hoping to do if elected is again, bringing resources not only from city, but all the way from federal, but also bringing developers who are interested to come into Ward Nine and creating that partnership to build more affordable housing within our neighborhoods.
So when you say we haven't been doing enough, so Mayor Hodges just released her budget, and I believe that the numbers are that there's another $24 million being put, $24 million being put into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So are you saying that's not enough, or that the way that it works needs to happen differently?
Well, if you look at affordable housing in Minneapolis, it has been going to other wards. Specifically, my priority is Ward Nine. So my priority would be, how do we bring more resources and more developers specifically to Ward Nine? There has been a lot of developers that are shifting to other wards because, and the reason for that is because they're not having dialogue, communication with our city council member. And so I would definitely open that window of dialogue if elected.
Are there places in Ward Nine that should be, to use this fun term, upzoned? Allow more density, higher buildings that currently are zoned for single-family or duplexes in Ward Nine?
There's potential locations within Ward Nine, Hayawatha being just an example of that, Hayawatha Avenue.
Are there any places that should be sort of off-limits to that idea? That you want to preserve the? to preserve the neighborhood character and not upzone them?
Yes, there are various different locations, and again, this would be not only my decision, but it would be a discussion between me, my office, and the residents as well.
And so, and I know I'm going back and forth with you a lot here, but this is Ward 9, we really should be looking at developing further, adding a bunch more housing.
There are potential places on East Lake Street that we can develop. I mean, I don't want to develop a location, for example, you know, 33rd and Chicago, where you have mostly all houses. I don't want to build a 90, you know, floor building there unless the residence wants to see that.
Is anybody looking at a 90 floor?
Again, it would be, there are potential locations for opportunities, but that would be depending on the discussions between my office and the residents.
Okay. I'll go, Gary Schiff. Same, there was a lot of different questions, but let's just sort of start at the beginning. If Ward 9 needs more affordable housing, how do you start to make that happen as a council member?
Sure. Well, council members have a really unique role to play in developing affordable housing in their community. The current situation, 0% rate, 0% vacancy right now in our neighborhoods. The city subsidized affordable housing buildings are completely rented, and what that does when the population is growing is it makes everybody a victim of rent hikes. It puts every family at risk. If we can't keep growing our city's housing supply to match our population growth, then we end up with very high rents and we end up with increased homelessness. You mentioned the money that the mayor is putting towards the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and I welcome that, but specifically, Tane, in the last four years in the 9th Ward, there hasn't been a single dollar allocated from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund into the 9th Ward. And that's a problem. There are no projects in the planning stages, there is nothing under construction, there is nothing breaking ground. So, we need a council member who will work to partner on land assembly, on putting together the financing, and on working to make sure that we are constantly adding to our supply of affordable housing so that we can meet the needs of the next wave of immigrants, the next group of workers, and even the next generation that may not choose to live in a single-family house. I talk to seniors every day at the door who ask me, is there any new senior housing coming? I love my neighborhood, but I don't like mowing the lawn.
What are the incentives, then, that Ward 9 isn't putting out the, oh, this is so nice, the water break, everyone. I haven't never had that happen before. So, but the incentives, then, if you're thinking about that there is affordable housing going up in some places, not in Ward 9, talking to developers, talking to the neighborhood is one thing, I've got to imagine that there are other levers that need to be pulled in order to start making some of that happen? No, it's just talking?
It really is. During my 12 years representing the 9th Ward, the 9th Ward added 549 new units of affordable housing. And 9th Ward was known for being one of the biggest producers of affordable housing in the entire city. It's connected to transit, we've got access to a great business climate on Lake Street, and these new populations, new housing, it helps our small business community as well.
And let me ask the, let me do this whole back and forth I just did with Mohammed, and the idea of upzoning, of creating more density throughout the ward, are there places that you look at and you say, this, we should be pursuing more density in this part of the ward?
Absolutely.
Can you name some of those, Boris?
Yeah, Tane, we don't really, this is an uptown. We don't have zoning fights per se, because 9th Ward is, you're going to find more mixed-use zoning, you're going to find a transit-oriented development environment, you're going to find neighborhoods like the Corcoran neighborhood that is begging, and it has been begging for years, to see new multifamily development along Lake Street and next to the light rail station. So, the zoning maps have been updated, the opportunity is out there, and Lake Street, our bus corridors, Bloomington Avenue, Cedar Avenue, 35W, these are all areas where people want to live close to transit that would be possible.
I love this. Can we do a big round of applause for this amazing restaurant that is hosting this year? This is so nice. I did, I moderated a thing for the Chamber of Commerce. They didn't give everybody water, so I thank you very much, Chamber of Commerce, if anyone's here. So I want to come down to the end, Mr. Peterson. So, same beginning of this question, how does Ward 9 need more affordable housing, and how do we make that happen?
First of all, you said $24 million is what the mayor approved?
The mayor proposed $24 million to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Okay, but it's not been approved yet, is it? Just a tentative number?
That will, yes, the budget's approved in December, I believe.
Okay, well, that's a lot of money to play with. Wow. There's properties that can be, there's properties that can be, you know, throughout the whole 9th Ward, there's properties that can be taken down and put up new structures, and make these properties into affordable housing. Yeah, the increase in population, we gotta keep up with the housing. I mean, we can't falter it, we can't let it, go ahead.
No, I was gonna ask, so then, I think the crux of the question, though, is, if you're a city council member, what do you feel as though your role, or the city's role in increasing that affordable housing in the ward is? How do you try and make that happen?
Well, I think I'd have to look at the needs first, see if it does need to be increased.
Do you, I mean, do you think right now that the ward needs more affordable housing?
Yes. Maybe I'm contradicting myself. $24 million is what the mayor wants to approve. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money to play with.
So, do you think that's too much to put into Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Well, that covers the whole Minneapolis area. I mean, north, south, east, and west, and everything, so. Entire budget is what, 1.3 billion? The entire budget? Is that proposed on there?
I don't have that, what this year's budget written down is, but that sounds about right. Let me ask, are there two candidates, so that same number, $24 million, do you feel like that's high, low? If you were on the city, would you be pushing for more money going into the Affordable Trust Fund?
I'm more interested where that $24 million is going. Because the history is that it has been going outside of Ward 9. So I'm interested in bringing, the more money that I can bring to Ward 9 for affordable housing, the better. So, I don't think it's enough citywide, knowing the issue, but particularly in Ward 9, we do definitely need to allocate resources for affordable housing.
And I'll ask Gary Schiff.
Well, I'm not sure on the exact dollar amount that you quote, because I didn't read that, that high of a number, but some of the money that I think she's proposing is also to go towards rehabilitation of existing units, perhaps in partnership with Minneapolis Public Housing. And I think yet other funds is designated for our City of Lakes Land Trust, which helps them buy properties for long-term affordability. With the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, you can't throw tons of money all at once because the city of Minneapolis is usually just the first money in. When the city supports a project, then developers, mostly nonprofit, go to the county, into the state, they'll purchase tax credits. It's typically a three-to-five-year cycle to get the planning and the financing together. So, $24 million sounds like a big amount, and it may be a little bit higher than we can spend in one year, given the capacity of the nonprofit affordable housing developers in our community. But with rehabs of existing units, and particularly with the need to remove lead from our public housing supply, I think that money is absolutely needed as an investment overall.
Okay. We've been doing about a minute and a half for each question, I'm wondering if we can do just a couple of sort of lightning round questions of about 30 seconds each, so that we can get to a couple last things. One thing, we haven't, you mentioned this idea of a multimodal Lake Street, which was very, because I actually biked here on Lake Street, and right now, it's terrifying to bike on. So I'm wondering, when you think about multimodal Lake Street, does that mean, does that mean a bike lane on Lake Street?
It does not mean a bike lane on Lake Street.
I'll just keep taking my life in my hands. Good, all right.
But it absolutely means an environment that's safe for bikes, that is safe for people and vehicles, and a place where buses and transit all intermix, and where we make sure that we're prioritizing the safety of pedestrians above all other modes.
Okay, I figured that was the answer for that one, but I am curious, more generally, over the last few years, we've seen some new bike lanes through Ward 9. I'm wondering, as you're looking forward to the development of the ward, and with Minneapolis having adopted a complete streets plan, where do you see sort of the opportunities for future development? Is there new, say, bicycle pedestrian infrastructure that you want to see in Ward 9, or do you feel like it's gone far enough at this point? And since I just picked on Mr. Schiff, I'll start in the middle with Mr. Farah.
Yeah, so I've, so I'm for bikes, but at the same time, I've talked to a lot of my residents where there are a lot of, one of the decisions that I really don't like that has been made at the city hall is that, you know, we tend to make decisions where bikes go without the input of the residents. And so, one of the things that I'm hoping to do is, if I'm interested in putting a bike lane anywhere, I have to have a discussion with the people that live in that neighborhood. And there are a lot of places that we've placed bikes without the consideration of those neighborhoods. And so, yes, there are opportunities, but at the same time, I don't want to hurt the safety of the residents and the safety of the bikers at the same time. And so, we need to have a discussion with business owners, with a lot of stakeholders on the table, especially residents, 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 which we are lacking right now.
Can I just ask you to, again, I know we're doing lightning round, but a specific where you feel like a project has happened and it's been at the detriment of the bikers that's hurt their safety potentially, because there hasn't been the conversation?
There are bikes on, there's a bike lane on 26, and a lot of the residents have not had a discussion with any of the city folks when they were doing that. And so, one of the things that we need to do, one of the things that I'm interested in doing, is if I see an opportunity where we are able to make a bike lane, we need to have a discussion with residents. And if it's not safe for them, if, based on their inputs, that will be my decision. And so, there, you know, so that, we need to have that dialogue. And right now, what's happening is we're just making decisions for the residents, thinking that it's good for them, and definitely, the way that it has been going, it is not as been good, it's not been good for them.
Okay, I'll come down to Mr. Peterson down here.
Okay, as long as it doesn't slow down commerce, all these bike lanes, and prevent parking in businesses.
Only in your imagination.
There was some talk about putting a bike lane on 38th Street down here. Between Cedar and Nicklet, there's over 20, 20 businesses depend on off-street parking. And there was talk about putting bike lanes down there. On the east side of the biking stadium, there's two, that's where commerce goes, that's where streets intersect, they got two bike lanes down there. I mean, come on. It's gotten a little bit overboard.
So you're saying no more future ones, or I'm just trying to figure out where?
I don't, I don't agree with any more new bike lanes, no.
All right. Mr. Schiff, is there anywhere that you would see a future for bicycles, bike lanes in the 9th Ward?
You know, the city has an advisory committee called the Bicycle Advisory Committee that has a long-term plan for where the future bike routes are going to be, but it's very clear when talking to residents in Phillips, particularly with the experience of 26th and 28th Street, that they were not involved and were not aware that these plans were made years and years before the bike lanes ever went in. And not only that, when they first went in, they went in with a concrete barrier that city hall just ripped up a year later when they decided it wasn't working out. And part of the confusion for everybody is that there's no standard for bike lanes throughout the city. It seems to be a different standard in every neighborhood, which causes confusion for everybody. We saw what happened on First Avenue downtown when the city attempted a four-block bike lane where the bikes were in between the parked cars and the curbs, and it was just on those four blocks, it was nowhere else. And then we see gorgeous examples on Lyndale and on Washington Avenue, where the bikes are actually up above the street, next to the sidewalk, completely separated from the traffic. That looks fantastic. I'd like to see more consistency in our planning, and I'd like to see much more coordination with neighborhood organizations.
So anywhere in Ward 9, the, yours, I mean, it sounds like you might know actually the long-term plan, any places that were created years and years and years ago that we should know about now?
The biggest thing has been conversations about connecting our parks to our schools for safe routes for kids, but our best opportunity comes when a road is reconstructed. And 9th Ward has been through a share of road reconstruction, so we've been through Lake Street, we've been through Minnehaha Avenue, we've been through 27th Avenue. The next best conversation is going to happen when a major arterial is under construction.
All right, I did a horrible job of making that a lightning round. So I'll try better with this one. Should Minneapolis become a truly, and that was, that's underscored, should Minneapolis become a truly zero-waste city? If so, how do you get to be a zero-waste city? I will start with Mr. Schiff.
Yes, we should, and what the end goal should be is to shut down the Hennepin County burner that currently is the recipient of trash that we all generate, I'm guilty, and it goes into the air eventually, and it lands on low-income populations in North Minneapolis, where it contributes to asthma rates in low-income kids. So, we have to reduce our burning, and we have to do that by reducing the waste stream. That means increasing composting, increasing recycling, and educating consumers that the decision they make on the shelf may affect the lungs of their neighbors.
So, let me go down the line, Mohammed.
Yes, I do.
Yes? How? I think that's probably the bigger part of the question.
And again, it's going to take more than the city council, you have to bring partners, you have to bring the county, you have to bring stakeholders, waste companies onboard to make sure that plan moves forward.
Mr. Peterson.
Boy, realistically, think about it, how can you have zero waste? I mean, how? Maybe it's possible. That's a good question. I don't, I don't think it's possible. You're always going to have waste, to some degree. We got our recycling, we got our organics going through, we got our regular garbage going through. I think we're doing a pretty good job as it is right now.
All right, there was a follow-up to this, which, very well, do you support a fee on plastic bags or a bring-your-own-bag ordinance?
No fee, no fee.
Bring your own bag.
What?
Bring your own bag.
Bring your own bag. Do you think that the city should have a policy that either incentivizes or disincentivizes people?
I think we should incentivize it, but... You know, I need to look into that how, but I think, I do believe, I'm not sure about the fee, but I do encourage, we need to encourage residents to bring their own bags.
Gary Schiff.
I do support regulating plastic bags, particularly because plastics are now showing up in our drinking water supply. And yes, Minneapolis drinking water supply has microfibers of plastic that we all ingest every time we drink tap water. To get at this problem, we must reduce plastic bags. The government, the nation of Kenya has banned them across the entire country. I like my grocery store where I go to, at Aldi, where you have to pay a 10-cent fee, but I want the stores to keep the fee. This should not be more money for government. This is just sending the message to consumers that nothing is free in our society. You pay one way or the other, so think before you take another plastic bag and just throw it into the waste stream.
So just to put a pin on that, that's a yes for a bag fee, but it would go to the stores?
Stores, yep, and it would basically say, a store can't give away a plastic bag, they can only charge a small amount for it.
All right. Well, that is a lot of stuff. What we promised to spend the last bit of this doing was giving each of the candidates an opportunity to do a closing statement, at about, giving them each two minutes here. So, I will do the opposite of what I did last time, we started over here and went that way, so this time I will start all the way down at that end. Mr. Peterson, take it away. Thank you so much for spending the time with us, your closing statement.
Thank you, thank you for coming. What I would do, what I would like to see, being a city councilman, I've never owned any kind of an office before, anything, it'd be, it'd be totally learning experience. Gary Schiff, he's educating me. Gary Schiff, he's educating me a lot here tonight. I mean, holy cow. Thank you. And, yeah. It's, it's...
I hope the Lord will.
I hope so, too. It's, it's, it comes down to common sense. Comes down to common sense. The plastic bag thing, come on, it's, it's common sense stuff. It's, it's, it's another fee the city just wants to raise your taxes, right? Easy to see. No, it's, it's just common sense. We got to accommodate a lot of people. We got to, we got to see the city grow. It's simple as that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes, please, a round of applause. This is the time to do it. All right. We, we'll come down middle here. Mohammed Farah.
Yes, again, thank you so much for having us today, my friends, my neighbors. The next four years is going to be very vital, and we have one way of going out of the issues that is before us. A lot of things went south over the last couple of years. The more I talk to my residents, the more I hear the cry for leadership, the cry for someone to come in and build relationship, build trust, and really care about the issues right here within Ward 9. It's about that time. We have a chance on November 7th to set things right. I want to set a new direction and a new vision with you in mind. I am hoping to do that with you all. And thank you so much. I will be around. Please come and ask me any comment, any questions or comments or concerns that you may have. So thank you again.
Thank you very much. Big round of applause. And Gary Schiff.
Thank you, Tane, for moderating tonight, and thanks to everybody who came and listened to what we have to say. I want to be honest, I didn't think I'd be running for city council again. But I didn't think I would have a city, when I stepped aside four years ago and when I cast my vote for Councilmember Kano, I never imagined that we'd be where we are today. I didn't imagine we'd have a council member who would block affordable housing. I didn't imagine that we would have a council member who wouldn't show up at a debate. But when I look at this room, I know that the people here today have put their hearts and their hard work into this community. And we have come so far from the 90s, which many of us remember as being some of the toughest times in the Phillips community. But I see Mike, and I think of the contributions that he's made, working to encourage economic development in the American Indian community and help create new homes. I see Greg, who's volunteered at Heart of the Beast and had to suddenly fathom how to keep patrons safe just walking from the parking lot to the front door. I see Mark, who comes to his business every morning on Bloomington Avenue and has to relocate 20 people who have camped out in his parking lot overnight. These are tough things for all of us to confront. But I know that as a community, I have hope because we've done it before, and we're going to be able to do it again. We're going to be able to come together, find the resources, cooperate, listen to one another, improve to everyone that the 9th Ward is a ward that welcomes everybody. 9th Ward is a ward where families get the opportunity to raise a kid in a, in a smart, safe environment. And I'm committed to working with all of you to make sure that that happens again. So thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. I'm going to turn the mic back over. One thing I forgot to mention, though, which is, this is a good place to do it. You all hopefully know that we live in Minneapolis. That's part one. Part two is that that means you have ranked choice voting, which means that you actually get to choose your top three candidates. If you have any questions about that, we have two fantastic volunteers over here who will answer any questions you have about that.
Neighborhood Association, and I want you to meet my co-chair, Abdul. And Abdul's got a presentation to make.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm here to present Quiruh Lo, certificate of appreciation for having us here tonight to do, free for us to come together. So I would like to give a pyro present.